Should there be an internal point?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, good morning. I am here, like you said, to request a motion to approve replacement of a social worker in our Social Protection Investigations Union. Unfortunately, we had another resignation as investigator, conquer dream job at DHS, which I can't be too mad about, but at the same time, I think it shows the caliber of the staff that we do have, that this worker is going to be on the fatality review team at DHS. So when you look at the selected process across the state and how competitive those jobs are, I'm happy, yet happy for them, yet sad that we're losing that position. Again, this position is vital to do these immediate safety checks, get out and do immediate safety planning. It is a budgeted position within the 2025 budget. There will be some small cost savings as this person was currently on step three. I don't really anticipate backfill, but I would suggest that if possible, we don't typically see a lot of transition into the child protection unit. However, assuming that that staff comes in grade 18, step one, there'll be about $6,200 in cost savings from the 2025 budget. I think your question.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the decision with backfill necessary.
Thank you. A motion second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes. You're up next with Paul Vengura, Family Behavioral Health Counseling Services, and Kristin LaForte.
Thank you, Anna, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I have Paul Vengura from the Family Behavioral Health Counseling Services with me today, and Kirsten, our adult services supervisor here. We're requesting a motion to provide a written statement of support for Family Behavioral Health Counseling. They are a provider seeking to establish an integrated health patient substance abuse and mental health treatment service here in Clay County. In order to meet state certification requirements, they do need to request a letter of support from the county board for Minnesota rules listed out in the agenda. Currently, we do have more limited outpatient providers for substance use and mental health services, supporting an additional provider alliance with our goals to enhance access to and offer clients more choices. I guess our rationale, and Kirsten and I were kind of looking at it and talking through what would be the, I guess, the pros and cons would be Paul's center provides an integrated treatment model, so it's a dual approach to treatment, not just mental health or substance use put both together. This is evidence-based in terms of the treatment model, and has demonstrated improved outcomes and aligns with the best practices in mental health and addiction recovery. This all, but also having one more provider would expand our client choice. It would increase the number of qualified providers within Clay County to meet their personal therapeutic needs. Client choice is critical to ensuring engagement, satisfaction, and successful treatment outcomes. Would also reduce transportation barriers around great location, kind of over by Buffalo Wild Wings, Highway 75 there. Many of the clients, we hold server-based transportation challenges that limit their ability to access the necessary treatment services. So establishing one more provider specifically in Morehead will reduce some of those travel times and barriers, making treatment more accessible for those that rely on public transportation, which often give a bus stop quite close to your location. And we prefer local treatment options. Some other providers are available in Fargo. Again, residents benefit from having a close by proximity to services and supports consistent attendance and participation. Again, both of those things are essential for a person to have successful outcomes in their recovery. This support for Family Behavioral Health Counseling also reflects our dedication to client-centered care accessibility and improve recovery pathways for residents. I do not anticipate an increase in any overall spending due to this approval, if this was to be approved. Expecting access to additional health patient chemical health providers may actually help reduce the need for more costly treatment options, for which we do then share a portion of those expenses. So I would hope that this would prevent some of those more costly treatment options from being to occur in person. Again, I would look for any questions that you may have.
Questions? If you get sent up, Mr. Vengura, how many patients, what kind of caseload would you be able to accommodate?
Well, for the group counseling, it's 16 per group for session. We do offer mental health assessment, individual therapy, one-on-one, a family therapy, a physical assessment, and a bill wellness plan. Then we do offer crisis management. We do DUIs, domestic violence as well. But a group session, it's 16 per group.
How many therapies would you have?
I have the therapies at the moment, and I'm looking forward to expand and add providers for juvenile and all the stuff.
These are some pretty desirable and needed services for this area. I'm speaking for myself, and I hope for the commission, this is certainly welcome and something we can be excited about. Any other questions or comments?
Paul? Yeah, thank you for coming, and certainly I'm an advocate of this, and if we keep improving and growing our services in the community, I hope great success for you. I am curious, do you have previous experience in this, or is this first time for a facility?
Yes, I do have a previous experience for this. I've been doing it for seven years now, and I do have another facility in Arizona as well. I just moved out here for work, and family, my wife got a job out here, so I decided to establish one out here at the same at Arizona. Arizona, I do have providers over there that are working on that, so I'm looking forward whilst I'm here to establish another one here. And I decided to do this because about eight years ago, I do have a substance abuse problem as well. I do have DUI, two DUIs, and I know what I went through. So since then, I decided to start doing this, and stuff like that, total products.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate you choosing Clay County.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll certainly make a motion. Yeah, I make a motion to provide a written statement of support from Clay County Social Service for Family Behavioral Health Counseling Services.
Well, I have a second. Okay, a motion to second, any further discussion? Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, good morning. The clientele that you have, will you have access to, will some of that be covered in insurance?
Yes.
Good, let's pose one other question. Okay, any other questions? Now, we'll move the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Welcome to Clay County, Mr. Vengura, and it's good to, we appreciate you bringing this opportunity to our community.
Thank you.
Troy Evans.
Mr. Chair, I don't see Troy here yet. I see we're a little ahead of schedule, so maybe he's on our way. See Lisa Boday from the City of Morehead here, if we wanted to jump that ahead.
Lisa Boday from the City of Morehead here. We will tier extension of the Make More Head Home Property Tax Rebate Program instead of public hearing date of December 3, 2024, 9:00 AM. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioner Evinger. The Make More Head Home Property Tax Rebate is a program that we've had in place in some fashion since the 2009 flooding as a market recovery activity, and it was something that the school district, the city council, and the county commission supported even after the state of Minnesota discontinued funding the program. And it has proven to be a helpful tool for homeowners and a good way to grow the city, school district, and county. And we sunset the program every two years so that commissioners and council members and school board members can evaluate the program and have an opportunity to make a decision whether to continue it or not. And the city council and the school board have approved resolutions supporting the program from through 2026. The rebate itself, the program is run as a rebate of two years of property taxes after a new home is fully valued, and it's in the form of a rebate so that people do pay their property taxes before they receive any benefit from the program. And I would stand for any questions if you have them. I have provided a summary of the program and a history of the program within your meeting package.
Questions?
My only question is, I see ITs in here, I just want to double check that we're having, if we're having any issues.
Well, I think YouTube isn't getting any sound, I think.
Okay, do you need us?
You need us to take a recess on this, get us online. Okay, is this being recorded?
It's being recorded, but there's no sound that's going along with the meeting at this point.
It's fixed.
Oh, it's fixed? Okay, all right.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, it's working, it'll be on record. Let's take a two or three minute break here, we're running ahead anyway, and we'll make sure this gets on record. Thank you.
I think we're back online. It would appear so. If you would indulge us, Ms. Boday, if you could just run through the factors on your presentation today, we'll get them on record.
Absolutely. I'm here this morning to ask the commission's participation in the Make More Head Home Property Tax Rebate. It is a two-year rebate of property taxes on newly constructed homes. The program has been in operation since 2009. It started as a state-paid program that allowed us to recover from the 2009, 10, and 11 floods. And after the state discontinued funding the program, the local jurisdictions decided to make it a self-funded program, converting from a credit to a rebate. And we sunset the program every two years so that the local policymakers can review the program. And I've provided a summary of the program in your meeting materials. The request is to extend the program through 2026, and the city council approved a resolution of supporting the program on October 15. And the school district made a similar resolution the end of October. And now I'm here at the county board to request the county's support. There's a letter from the Building Industry Association of the Red River Valley included in your packet, and the program has proven to be a part of the growth that the county and city are experiencing. So we would ask your approval of the program.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Boday?
I don't have any questions, but I have a couple of comments, and I, this has been a terrific program. It's been not only for Morehead, but it's been for some of our other communities as well. And I really don't think that now would be a time where we'd want to discontinue this. When we look at, I think every community right now is probably seeing a lower building permits the way it is with the economy, the way it is, especially for housing. And I think we need to keep every tool that we have, can have in the toolbox to help home builders in, not only construct, but I think there's also, this even applies to some remodeling, I believe, doesn't it? Does this apply to that?
It does not. We had a remodeling program, and we tried that for a few years, and it wasn't proving very successful. So we're, you know, always looking for other tools to assist with renovating and improving existing homes.
And so just a clarification, so this one, Morehead is asking us to approve of this, but do we have our own tool that we do?
We would, Mr. Chair, you're also, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, you'll be asked as a board to set a public hearing to have that discussion for the county portion of the funding part of this, so yes.
Very good, yeah. I strongly support this request.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
So are we needing two separate motions?
No.
Well, for today, we're, one, going to consider the motion to approve the support of Morehead's, Make More Head Home, and then also, we're going to look to set the date for a public hearing.
I'd like to make that motion so we can have a discussion on it.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Make More Head Home Property Tax Rebate Program, two-year extension, and set a date for a public hearing for the Clay County.
I'll second the motion.
Steve, do we have, is this only impacting housing within the city of Morehead, or do we have a similar?
The first item for Morehead impacts that the city. Our public hearing will address the tax abatements for the county.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, I want to make sure I was seeing it right. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Lisa, for the presentation. It's always good to see the stats, particularly with the single-family housing starts, because I, you know, we talk a lot about new apartment opportunities and those types of housing pieces, so it is, it is good to see the stats. I'm a little concerned just that they have dropped, but I understand the economy, and I mean, that plays into that, too. I just think from a broader perspective, this is just another tool in the toolbox, if you will, to continue to recruit folks to make our community and Clay County home. And I just think the more we can do to continue to foster that development is favorable, so I wholeheartedly support this.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments, and I think it's a terrific program as a long-term realtor. I've had many of my clients use this program with new construction, and I will just say, you know, we continually, Clay County have to fight against some of the other reasons for other people maybe wanting to choose North Dakota, and this is one that I think has proved to, in what I've experienced, make a difference. The incentive we have is quite different than the North Dakota side, and it's, in my view, adds a lot more incentive. So it's one of the ways that we also can compete with the North side, North Dakota side from new construction business, so thanks.
Any other comments? If not, we have motion to second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, all.
Okay. Troy and Kathy? I know Kathy likes to come up here, you can come sit by a mic. Good morning, Troy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Today, we are here to request approval of amendment to our food service agreement for the Withdrawal Management Detox Facility. Once we are in the new facility, food will need to be transported to us from Trinity, so we have amended the contract to reflect the transportation piece.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the request.
Second. Any additional questions?
If I just follow up?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something that we've been aware of and knew that this was going to be a need with the new facility. We've talked about it at the committee level, and so it's no surprise. Really feel like it, we have great service with Trinity right now, and it, you know, just will take some maneuvering in terms of scheduling, but we, this is not a surprise.
Anyone else?
They're going to bring the food here, then we need, they need another vehicle to take it over to the detox?
Yep, yes, Commissioner. We're going to give them the use of the emergency preparedness vehicle that we had with Public Health. They're going to have that vehicle. Trinity will make the food in the jail like they currently do, and then one of their staff will be transporting.
Oh, so the food's being made at the jail here?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, we did, we worked with MCIT as part of this process. We also worked with Bryan's office to make sure that from a liability standpoint, the county is.
Okay. How many meals are we talking about a day?
Thirty-two, sixty-four potentially, plus they send breakfast usually the night before, so sixty-four, what, sixty-four? Yeah, so sixty-four for lunch, and potentially with thirty-two beds, so sixty-four, another thirty-two, so ninety-six meals a day.
Is that Wheaton?
Wafferton, that's Wafferton now.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
It's been a long weekend.
Twice a day, two meals a day. Breakfast is...
I guess I could have done the math.
Potentially, yeah, ninety-six a day, sorry for that.
Yeah, Troy.
Anything else? If not, we have motion on the floor, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, guys. Sorry for the delay.
No problem.
Thanks.
Opening?
No, I haven't heard of it.
Do we have an opening date, Troy?
Hey Troy? Can you provide maybe a brief update on your licensing and?
Yeah, I sure can. I just spoke to Gert's Construction yesterday. They're still finalizing some of the door hardware and some of those things. I'm going to contact the MDH engineer today to see if he has everything he needs now. I got a, Dan was going to check on the certificate of occupancy. I think they went through, and we're getting closer with that. Once the engineer signs off and says everything to the inspection unit for MDH, they'll contact me, come up, do a inspection of the new facility. Once that's done, then I can contact DHS. They may or may not come and do a physical inspection, but they will have to sign off for it for our licenses, so we have been, have staff over there almost every day preparing, getting everything ready, so once we get that word, it should be able to move pretty quickly.
Any other, any questions? We appreciate it, Troy, we know you guys are on it, and it's going to be a wonderful facility. We're looking forward to having it available to our citizens.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, and we start this week with Frank.
Okay, Tuesday, we had highway tracking, it was a short meeting there. Looking to have a public meeting on the diversion on November 19. Positions have been filled, the shop foreman, motor graders have been filled, so they're looking, they're in pretty good shape out there for upcoming winter season. There's also open house scheduled for county state day 12 and 52, an open house for the roundabout. I attended that meeting that next day in the afternoon. Let's see, on Wednesday, I attended the Wild Rice Watershed Board meeting. They had a lot of discussion on permits being presented. Most of the stuff with those permits, there's matter putting in drain tile, and it's always the neighboring farmer, that doesn't like the matter of the water being put his land, and coming up with a good situation is pretty tough. They worked on sediments inputs into, onto the rivers, how much sediment gets put in rivers from land, from the land, and it's pretty much done by school, school students who take that data, and they just discuss how much information they really need on that. Also, there's a complaint about parking on the drainage ditch. If there's a drainage ditch there, there's some farmers starting to park machinery on their, on the drainage ditch right away, so that was all settled, so that was it for that meeting. On Wednesday, also, we had the pre-negotiation meeting for the water, water shutdown, not, excuse me, water, water district, which Daniel Marks took us through what's going to probably happen at the court session, and after that, we hit the court session, which went real good, good presentations, and looks like everything's going to be ready to move ahead on that. That's it.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, Tuesday, we had an election, and I just want to congratulate Commissioner Evinger for being re-elected, and also, I was a bear who was sitting in our audience today, and look forward to working with both of you much, much more over the next four years, and also, I was re-elected, so we'll continue the good work. On Wednesday, I had joined Commissioner Mojo in our weekly call for the PRTF, our legislative coordination that we're doing as we move forward with our legislatures to get funding for the PRTF bill law with the unsecured juvenile center. The, on, let's see, and moving to Thursday, I had the, early in the morning, had the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee meeting, we met over at the detox. It was nice to go over there and look at it again. I wish it had people in it, but it was a good, it was good to see the building, inside the building again. Basically, we're just keep moving forward for the planning of the retreat and the content of that retreat that is set for January 31st, with a backup date of February 7. Commissioner Campbell was there, so he might add a few more comments. Then I was, later, we had our monthly meeting for the Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Committee. We went through reports from all the entities that were there, and I would say there was probably around 10, so updates from them. And then our spotlight was by, done by Megan Lundberg, who's with the Morehead PD as their community resource navigator, and she talked about the type of work she does and taking calls to diffuse calls so they aren't going directly into PD, and then refers out to the right entity, whether it's the colony or other nonprofits, as where and how to try to help these people that are in need. Then, again, on Thursday, later in the day, I had the monthly CLASWCD Board meeting, also joined with Commissioner Bojo. Just a few things to make note, they had a reelection there, two people that were up... Just a few things to make note, they had a reelection there, two people that were up for election on that one. And Joe Hildebrand, who is our, the current chair, was re-elected. And then also Carol Schoeff was defeated. And I just wanna acknowledge to the public the great work she did for us for over twenty-five years. So a bit disappointing for her, but Brad, shoot, I lost it. Ezra, what's the last name? Fugley? Brady Fugley, sorry about that. Anyway, look forward to meeting with him and getting to know him as he starts his term on January one. So other than that, we had cost share contracts for a project, and these projects get really big. But it had to do with a, working on a ditch area that has been eroding out greatly. Also, cost shares for some water and sediment control basins, and then some coupled for well sealing. So any other comments, I guess Commissioner Mojo may have some on that meeting. So then on Friday, I did have another meeting as far as the PRTF. And it was a meeting with Senator Kupac and Deb White from Mauryan City Council. They were two separate meetings, but mainly about, I'll be working a lot legislatively with all, you know, anything I need to as far as legislative, but with a real focus on the Senate side. And so I was pretty much asking if Senator Kupac, if he would be our lead, and he accepted that. Immediately, we started reaching out to two others that are on the Senate Human Services. And hopefully shortly, we'll be having them come to town to do a tour of the facility. And, and our next steps as we make this transition to the, for the PRTF, and then also moving forward aggressively to your budgeting from DHS and try to get in the governor's budget. So the other conversation with Deb White was just ask for the, to get on the agenda for November twenty-fifth to see if we can get a letter of support for the PRTF. And we should be, either you or I, Steve, should be receiving a call, or we'll be talking to Dan Maulay on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I also attended the meeting with Representative Keeler, the PRTF planning meeting. Certainly, we're full speed and working on making sure we're doing all of the outreach that we need to. The results of the election make that, make us, or provide us with an opportunity to maybe do a little more legwork than we were anticipating, reaching out to both parties. Clay County, I think, is positioned well because we are represented by both parties. We've had great support from Representative Keeler and Representative Joy, and now that was reaffirmed with Senator Kupac's conversation. So we really covered a lot of bases at that planning meeting. Commissioner Kravenoff will work on outreach to all the Senate side. I will work on the outreach to all the representatives, the House Finance and Policy Committees. I attended the Clay County fifty-two open house out at the Highway Department with Commissioner Campbell and Gross. Really great input and attendance. We had township officers, we had landowners, we had residents. That is a really challenging intersection, just given the nature of having a railroad and not being on the north-south line, if you will, being on an angle. But I really do feel like the input and insight that was provided will be helpful with the planning, particularly making sure that we aren't cutting off implement use, that they're still able to get through there. Certainly, there were some folks that just want a four-way stop, but that will really not do anything to slow the traffic down, which I think is the main concern there. The next day, I had a conversation with, I'm sorry. The chamber had really facilitated bringing some folks to the table for conversation with Charlie Johnson from the Visitors Bureau and the hotel industry. We identified that there's some issues if there is a benefactor paying for hotel rooms for the homeless. There's a little bit of a hiccup in policy, and so we were able to get together, spurred by Representative Joy having that conversation, to identify what those issues are. And throughout that, we brought Quinn to the table and Cap Bell P. and a couple of the hotel owners. And I think we're at a position where we might be able to open up a substantial amount of beds for short-term housing for the homeless when it comes, becomes cold. So really excited about that development. I also attended the Clay County Soil and Water Conservation District meeting with Commissioner Kravenoff. He did a really great job covering those, the highlights of that. We did talk. There was a resignation within the office. Kyle has really been a great asset to the team there. He's leaving for a opportunity on the West Coast, so that will leave a hole. But I think they are working through opening that back up for advertisement. There was a discussion of a potential opportunity to house an additional Pheasants Forever biologist. That's, that was a great opportunity several years ago when Tony had that position. There's some space concerns. We did discuss having maybe additional conversations with Joe to see if there's county space open similar to what we've done in the past. And just lots of really great updates on all the issues. Commissioner Campbell and I attended the Election Canvassing Board that we had on Friday to do that. An additional meeting with Commissioner Kravenoff on the PRTF planning on Friday. I attended Pam's retirement. Pam has been really helpful to me whenever I have IT questions and concerns. So I appreciate her work at the county. And then, over the last week, it's been really exciting to see all of the green lights on porches and buildings lit up in honor of all of our veterans. Really grateful for all of the veterans in Clay County who have served us so well. I know Frank and Brian, thank you so much for your service, and just really grateful for that. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Cam?
Thank you.
Darren.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
The third veteran.
You're just over there. Thank you, though. I'm sorry.
All right, so on November fifth, I did also attend the Highway Tracking Committee meeting that Commissioner Gross reported on. I would wanna point out that the public hearing on the nineteenth is in regards to the county taking over a township road. It's part of, it needs to be done that way by law. And fortunately, the diversion authority has entered into and, and got an agreement with Holy Cross Township, which was vital to this whole process, so that's, that's now done, which makes this a little bit easier for us to do without knowing, knowing that we have an agreement in place with them. And then Justin did report that his motor grader positions are filled, as well as the maintenance worker, but the diesel mechanic position still remained open. He was, I think he did have somebody that he thought might qualify for that. I don't know if, Darren, do you know if we've gotten anywhere?
Yeah, the diesel mechanic is still open.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then that same day, then I also attended a diversion planning meeting. The items of discussion there were, where we did have a, there's, there's a wage study going on for all the diversion employees right now. And so the conversation was, what do we use in the meantime in terms of a COLA for those employees starting January one? And, and right now, the process would be where we would follow CAS counties COLA. But there's been some discussion about using the same formula in the future as what we use with dispatch, which is a, which is an average of multiple counties. Because we're, because this wage study, it's, you know, it's supposed to be done late December, in maybe early January. So what we've decided to do is not to do anything with the COLA at this point in time for, for those employees come January one until that wage study is done, so we can determine. The concern might be is if we have several employees who might be already way above the, you know, because there's just been no comparison to that. So the decision was made that, that there would be no COLA at the beginning of the year. But when the wage study is done, that would be determined, and any COLA that would be done would be retroactive to January one. And that's, and that's gonna, and that recommendation is being forwarded to the Full Diversion Authority today, I believe. Or, or, excuse me, the meeting, next Thursday, yes. Then, then we also did discuss, I had asked to be on the agenda for a letter of recommendation from the Diversion Authority in support of our funding request. And they have agreed to bring that forward to the Full Diversion Authority. And as a matter of fact, I think there was, Mayor Mahoney even brought up the idea of participating maybe in some lobbying efforts through the, on behalf of the Diversion Authority. So, so that, that, nothing is finalized on that, but it's thought that that might be something that the Diversion Authority might consider. On Wednesday, I did attend the, there was a public hearing through the courts for the West Center Regional Watershed District. And the purpose of that, that hearing was to have the judge approve of Phase One of the engineering study. And then, and then we were asking the court to order the Phase Two engineering study, which is a much more in-depth study. And that, of course, could take, you know, I mean, that could take a year to eighteen months, who knows, to do that, to that, do that portion. And, and the judge was really satisfied with the presentation that was there and did order it. And I do wanna state that we did have some public people, or people from the public, I should say, that were, that went there and spoke up of this. And there was no negative responses whatsoever at the hearing. As a matter of fact, there were only positive ones, and there were some who were concerned that maybe they weren't within the district, and they wanted to be. So, you know, so all, all signs were good. The courtroom that Frank and I sat in was full, and they, they actually had to have a, an additional courtroom right below it with additional room for other public to attend, and that room had considerable people in there. So it was well-attended. Later that day, I did go over to the Highway Department for the Highway Fifty-two Roundabout Discussion. And Commissioner Mojo mentioned that, so I don't have anything more to add. On Thursday morning, the seventh, we had the Intergovernmental Meeting. And we, primary focus of that meeting was the agenda. And originally, we had planned on having an opioid crisis discussion, which we still anticipate having. And then prior to last week, we also had Heartland Trails, an update on Heartland Trails. It was determined that with all the things that we've got going on right now, Heartland Trails is probably gonna be dropped. And we were gonna probably bring in two additional topics. One would be an update on our, our PRTF. And the other one would be more discussion on homeless issues that is hitting hard in the area. So we have to, I think Paul and I are gonna talk with Steve, and I think Sarah is gonna come over here at two o'clock today. And we're gonna kinda get that agenda worked out based on that information so that we can get, as Paul pointed out, that date is in January, and we wanna get, save the date out and that type of thing, and have some information in regards to what the agenda would look like. I anticipate that would be a pretty well-attended event with the items that will be on there. Then Friday, I, I also attended the, on behalf of the county, the canvassing board with Commissioner Mojo. And then AM's Retirement Party was followed right after that, and that was also very nice. And I do wanna point out that I was able to attend Steve's mother's celebration of life on Saturday. And it was a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful ceremony, and I was glad I was able to be there for that, so. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Last week, of course, Tuesday night was the election, and I look forward to another four years of serving the people of Clay County. And I look forward to serving it with Ezra Bear and with Paul Kravenoff, who were also elected for another four-year term. And we're gonna miss you, Frank. You've been a solid guy for this county. You've been a solid guy for Dilworth. And you're a source of wisdom for us new guys when we come on, and we're gonna miss you. You've gotta stay in touch with Ezra. Make sure he's going in the right direction.
He's still got a month and a half to go here.
But other than the election and picking up signs and getting back to work, Thursday on the seventh, I had a State Emergency Communication Board Legislative Government Affairs meeting remotely. Had a quarterly SEIP report, education outreach. Worked on a, they're working on developing a decision tree to communicate between work groups and a website redesign. The Legislative Committee is setting up a timeline for legislative rules. We wanna come up with a policy for a fact sheet to keep everybody updated. The four oh three technical update that I'm serving on that committee, again, we are still stymied. They're supposed to be getting a request for proposal out for a moderator, and that's kinda bogged down until the legislature meets and clarifies who's gonna pay for it. So that is a work in progress. Other than that, I have nothing else except to point out that last week, we approved a restorative practices grant that's moving forward, and I mistakenly volunteered myself for the Restorative Practices Committee, thinking that that was still on my portfolio. And did some research and discovered that we took it off我的portfolio this year because there'd been no meetings. So I am interested. We have a meeting that later this week. I have talked to them, and I'm interested to see if the board would support opening up that component on, on my committee assignments.
I'll make that motion.
No, second.
Okay. We have motion in a second. Any discussion on this?
Is that the one where they have the eleven?
Yep.
What's their event? There was something come out this week, right?
Yeah, they've got, they've got a committee meeting.
Oh, that's when the meeting is, okay.
Thursday, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I did get an invitation to, and I got it on my calendar.
Good, okay.
If no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. And Brian, I, I'm really excited about the team you've put together on this. I think it's gonna do great, great things, particularly for our school districts. You know, I've been working with it since I got here in 'oh six, and some good things have been done. And I particularly think it's great, we're actually gonna be able to make people financially, if not whole at least, move towards giving them some security with funding on this grant. So I appreciate the opportunity to work with them.
And just, just for your information, I know you're wearing, you have it probably on your email, but it is for tomorrow.
Okay, very good. I've got it in there and plan to be there, or be here. And that completes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, just wanna thank the board for allowing, allowing the opportunity to be off last week. It was very much appreciated. Also thank Darren for, for covering the busy week that we had, both at board and at the week. So thank you. Just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. I know that you guys talked... I, I know that you guys talked last week about several things. I'm just going to touch base on, on meetings that I was not with, any committee meetings with commissioners. I met with Lori Johnson and Karen Lauer and Greg Wagner from Western Central Initiative. There are three businesses in Barnesville that are, are coming forward to look at the potential use of our Clay County Loan Fund. And so, Commissioner Krabonoff is going to be contacted here along with our committee that the board has approved about looking at the possibility of providing funding for those three businesses. On the 31st, I met with Joe Olson, Dale Arnold from the Minnesota Department of Corrections. As you, as we've talked about in the past, the Department of Corrections would like to bring its adult probation back to the, to the campus at some point. And so, we had some additional conversations with their leasing person about, about potentially moving back. And we'll have some more conversations about that in our Building Committee. I met with Trenton from CAS County Land Trust, just received an update on the different work that they're doing here in, in Clay County. They've, have taken on a number of projects, both in Clay County and now are expanding into the rural areas. And so, we may have Trenton come here and provide the board an update on some of the good work that they're doing in bringing additional affordable housing to Clay County. On the 11th, or, excuse me, on the 1st, I met with the, the city of Moorhead in regards to our monthly meeting. We talked about budgets, the PRTF support that Commissioner Krabonoff talked about. We talked about flood mitigation, border legislation. We also did have a discussion, as this board's aware, City Moorhead is a partner in our Resource Recovery Facility. Our contract is up at the end of 2016, or, excuse me, 2026. Ooh, time warp. And.
Ten years.
And they had, had expressed some concerns by contract. If, if there's any issue, they have to provide a one-year notice. And so, we'll be having some additional conversations through SWAC and, and with our committee, commissioners on that committee moving forward, but wanted to make you aware of that. Just a couple notes of this past week, we had several department heads that completed the NACO High Performance Leadership Training. There's another group that's participating right now. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to participate in that. It's a great program. After our first, our first 10 people completed, we are going to plan to have a discussion about the, the program and, and talk about the viability for it moving forward. Just of note, on Thursday and Friday this week, I'll be in St. Paul for the AMC Futures Group. We're also hoping to line up potentially meeting with the governor, governor's office to talk about our PRTF. More to come on that. And just a reminder, before we meet again, next Monday, we have the Township Officers Meeting, November 18th, 8:30. The location will be at the LEC this year with the Dilworth Community Center no longer being available. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Brian, you got anything for us? Darren? Thank both you guys for your service. Yesterday was Veterans Day. I bought former Commissioner Whalen a Danish and a cup of coffee. And Frank, for your service in a lot of ways here. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide an update. Last week, I appreciate the support this board gave me by voting to support a continuing education-type exchange in Germany. Unfortunately, the workload that the county has to lift our PRTF to funding for, which is fine. I mean, it's great, but I just wanted to every, let everyone know that I did decline the trip to continue the work that the county needs on that project.
I'm just going to go ahead and embarrass you. You are doing yeoman's work as you always do on your assignments, but on this PRTF. And I know you put your heart and soul into it and you're passing a chance up for, it wasn't going to be a junket, it was going to be a working trip. But I know you were excited about it. Your decision to stay here and contribute to moving the PRTF forward is, I really respect that. And I know it wasn't an easy decision. So, thank you. Jackie, you got anything for us? Do we have any other business? If not, and this may be a record, I will adjourn us.